All right, thanks. So we are here for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners, Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, eleven oh five AM on that computer. Sorry for starting late, but we had a work session that was good and productive. So go ahead, please turn off cell phones, silence anything noisy, and we'll stand to the Pledge of Allegiance for the moment. Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you everyone. Go to approval of the agenda. Fellow commissioners or staff, is there anything that needs to be removed or changed the order?
Nothing I know.
No.
Good, okay. Then I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great, thank you. Any footprints?
No.
So call for a vote on the motion on the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we approve the agenda. Community information items, none from me?
None for me either. Well, I guess I'll just share that the this school district has been working with the District Accountability Committee and the Finance Committee, getting those back up and standing. The DAC is a statutory obligation of the district. It's been defunct for a few years. And so we're going through school performance frameworks now. They are public meetings and our information is available on the district website.
I have just, we are, I'm working with emergency management and our partners to send out a letter to subdivisions along County Road seventeen and possibly four, working with our partner Team Rubicon. They're going to come out for five days in July and do some fire mitigation. So we're letting folks know that that will be happening, primarily focused on County Road seventeen right of way along the county road. And we're also looking for interest in folks who might want to have Team Rubicon on their personal properties to do some mitigation. They are able to do that and they've had a lot of success in a couple other communities that they've worked in and come back to year after year with that interest increasing. So hoping to establish a nice relationship and resource through Team Rubicon. Very appreciative of that.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now I'll ask for public comment. And again, this is for items not on the agenda. Okay, one in the room, yeah, please, yes, take your name.
Hi, my name is Jan Morizal. I live in Twin Lakes most of the time. Since I also attended for people on the Zoom meeting, the work session, I just wanted to quickly mention something. I had emailed everybody very late, not also realizing that yesterday, of course, was the holiday and that the last town hall meeting was just, you know, a week ago. And it gave us just very little time to talk among the residents and businesses of Twin Lakes. And what several of us are proposing is, just like you're creating the community housing overlay to exclude certain areas from an increase in licenses, to please consider that town of Twin Lakes is an area where there should not be any limits. And so I gave you a little map that I drew by hand. And I just realized on my key, I left out the colors. So you can color them in yourself, see whether you get it right. And but the point is really, it's a very small area. You can see there about six blocks where you have maybe forty structures. And you have the business, of course, that you're familiar with, which are in black. You have right now, in town, what I call town, only seven short-term rental licenses. You have surprisingly to me, too, you have nine long-term renters. You have four in purple, long-term property owners that live there year-round. A lot of them, by the way, are landlords. And then you have, you have seven part-time owners. Mostly the houses are actually not winterized. There's one house for sale, and then there are some structures that have been colored in because they are deserted and we're living there. They are certainly not winterized. For reference, there's also the schoolhouse and the fire station. And so whatever you do, it is very small, but it happens to be that several of us, I would say arbitrarily, were left off the existing list. One of us had a license and he was informed it was the wrong license, even though he is a new subject field. And he was told, no, you cannot renew it. And he had to actually stop renting for the lengths of the moratorium. So that had quite a bit of impact on him. Also, I think really the Twin Lakes Village is really the hub of visitors, and it already is with lodges. And I think in particular for hikers, they still need accommodations, including there is no place for a hiker, for example, to fill up a water bottle because it's restricted. Anyway, that was a short thing. And you have the map, and I would love to meet with you and hear the color guides, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Jan. And yeah, and then we'll make sure that staff also get that and that it's, you know, as was mentioned in the work session, will be continuing to take public comment, including yours. So it will, it'll be in the mix. Anyone else in the room for public comment? No. So anyone online on the Zoom call for public comment? Not seeing that. Peter, you're unmuted, but I don't. No, okay. So let's move on to the regular agenda. Item number one. Lake County Sheriff's Office State of the Union. So he, Speckman, these, the floor is yours.
Is it possible to pull it up on the?
Sure. Is it, is it in teams? Yes. Yeah. Okay. Let's do it. All right. Sorry, he just. Let me share this to the Zoom. You can, you can start if you are ready and all.
Okay.
There's a, if you could go to menu.
Yeah.
And then view.
Full screen?
And then full screen mode.
Sure. All right. There we go.
All right. Well, thanks for your time this morning. Just, I'd like to go over our two thousand and twenty-three year. It's in the books now. As expected, a lot of this has just been a juggle of maintaining the day-to-day calls, being there for the community, dealing with personnel, and then also working on the overall improvement of the office and our growth. So if you go to the next screen, what we'll go over is that. We'll go over those different items today. If you want to hover over this for a second, this kind of just guides us every day, you know, our mission vision and values. I will read our mission statement is to start each day with the purpose to provide the residents and visitors of Lake County with the highest level of righteous public safety services. It gives everyone the opportunity to fully enjoy a peaceful life. That's kind of rooted everything in all our directions. And it's important for me to put in there the part where we start each day because we go through a lot in this career field. And that's just something that we push out to the staff is just to make sure that, you know, we'll acknowledge what happened yesterday, but today's a new day and let's, let's go out there and do what we're supposed to do. In our vision statement, we listed out what our ultimate goals are, although they may be unrealistic. But it's something that we strive for every day. In our leadership aspect, I threw in there boldly, we want to be a premier agency. And I know that's taking a huge step, but that does give me at least that long-term vision that I'm trying to implement here is what does it take to be a top-level agency? We also want to create partnerships within the community, and the key word there is prevention. We respond to calls and it's, that means it's already happened. And that's what we would like to do is prevent that from happening. And we believe one of the better ways to do that is through partnerships through the community because we can't be everywhere at once. We do also believe that that comes through our relationships with the people of Lake County. And then just the, the direction that we have seen over the past few years is everybody wants to know what we're doing. So we strive to make sure that everybody knows what we're doing. It's all recorded, it's accessible. We want to make sure that this type of information is put out to the public. And then our core values, we simplify it just to integrity, service, and excellence. Integrity is first because our honesty is imperative to everything we do. People trust us. We have a high level of responsibility. And if we're not leading our actions through integrity, then we lose that trust. So I feel like that's a foundational piece for building trust. Also, this is a service-related career field that whoever engages in this has that in their heart to serve. And we want to make sure that we're acknowledging that. And then we end with excellence, just to say that just doing the job by itself is not enough. We want to go above and beyond. Next, please. You can read this in your own time, but just a few key points that I wanted to pull out of my situational report for two thousand and twenty-three. It's just, I acknowledge my responsibility as a public servant, the role of sheriff is for the safety of our community in that we're working towards baseline. Our goal is to get this office to a foundational level so we can structure this to, to, to last for generations to come. I also acknowledge that our staffing levels still are to the point where we can fully serve our community, and we'll go over some of those numbers later. But it's also important to note that just the wide variety of tasks that these deputies have to handle from split-second decisions, one moment to the next moment where you're just sitting on somebody for twelve hours trying to calm them down. So it's that variety that we have to deal with that happens day-to-day. You can click over. A quick review of our budget. We managed three point two million-dollar budget between the Sheriff's Office General Fund, Dispatch Center, and Detentions. And I apologize, can't really see that, but the, the yellow represents salary and wages, which as you can see consumes most of each department's budget. And we just pulled the, the top expenses out of that. And then the bottom chart represents the green. If you can see it close enough, is two thousand and twenty-two revenues. And the blue represents two thousand and twenty-four, or excuse me, two thousand and twenty-three. So it's a two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three comparison. So we've built an organizational chart to try to give a visual of what we're trying to do growth-wise. So this is a common structure for an organizational chart. However, you can see a lot of colors there. And what they represent, if you look at the key portion, is where we want to be each year. And so each color represents where we'd like to be for this year, what positions are available, where we'll sit with full-time employees, hard-time employees, volunteers, with the last goal of being in two thousand and twenty-six, being able to fill those last positions. So we have a fully-staffed Sheriff's Office by two thousand and twenty-seven. And so what I like about this is it gives that visible, visible representation for not just staff or the community, but any potential employment opportunities that people may see as, as an option here at the Sheriff's Office. They can see where our planned growth is, you know, it gives them some hope in lateral movement for, it's like special lead positions or vertical growth through promotions. We've had a lot of cool opportunities in two thousand and twenty-three to get engaged with the community. The first ones we talked about here is just our engagement with our youth. We had some different programs through Cloud City High School and, and Lake County High School Colorado Mountain College's Pathways Program, where we gave students the opportunity to experience every aspect of the Sheriff's Office. What's cool about the Sheriff's Office is we do have a lot of different aspects, from detentions to dispatch to patrol to administrative positions to evidence positions. And we set up scenarios for the kids to go through to process a crime scene, dispatch it. They were on the radio and we gave them a tour of the facility. And Shane is highlighted there as our evidence technician because ninety percent of the students wants his job. So he's trying to protect his job at this point. That was the head. And it was just, it's long-term planning to plant that seed in our youth's heart that, you know, this isn't a bad career option. And we have a lot of different avenues for you to pursue within the Lake County Sheriff's Office. We also joined the regular Lions Club career fair. That was, that was just, everybody was there, military. And so we had a good, interactive opportunity there, too. We also engaged in the race series, as you, as you guys all know, coming to our town. Every summer takes a lot of planning. We engaged in contracts with the Colorado Rangers to help keep staff available for regular calls. So we learned a lot this year. We definitely improved from the prior years. We've just seen that better services that we're keeping available to to the citizens not participating, but then also to the participants of the race series. So we had some good progress there. The bottom-left photo, if you guys recall that day, the first day in August, was the transal downpours. We had planned the National Night Out, which is a nationwide law enforcement event where we can get engaged with the community, have fun events for the kids to do. We also had set up a fundraising opportunity for a tree chop, child advocacy, advocacy center, and we were flooded out. We had to spend days drying out the bounce houses, but we recovered and got a spot. Thankfully utilized the county's spot at the boom days. And we were able to sell hot dogs there and still provide a donation to the tree chop, which is the advocacy center that we use for all child forensic interviews out of Sonoma County. So they were grateful for that. Interim Chief Ken Chavez and I were able to participate in the car show that happened at the elementary school. We were both able to select our own vehicle of choice to issue out the Sheriff's Award and the Chief's Award. So it was a cool opportunity to get engaged there. We also participated in our first Faith in Blue event. And what that is, is an opportunity for law enforcement to get engaged with all denominations and all churches within a community, just to let them know that we're there to support them in whatever needs they may have. And then we also used it as an opportunity to collect food for St. George's. And then December was a pretty cool month. We helped out with the Legacy Foundation in their annual gift giving, which has been going on for over forty years. And it's a great way for uniformed members to get in front of the children to help that relationship with our, our youth in elementary school. We also received, an anonymous donor gave us ten, or excuse me, a hundred ten-dollar gift cards and asked that we hand it out on just behalf of the Sheriff's Office, just to help that community relationship. And one cool story that popped out of that was we had an individual that we've had a lot of dealings with, and she's been kind of quiet for a while, approached one of our deputies and told her that I've been sober for over a year now and just wanted to apologize for all the havoc she had caused us. And so it was a cool opportunity to say, you know, here's a gift card for you. You know, it was just a few bucks, but it was a, it was a nice exchange. And then we also reached out to the elementary school and asked for if anybody, if any of the teachers or staff there knew of some families that needed some help during the holidays. This was kicked off by one of the moms there saying, I don't have a way to supply gifts for my kids this Christmas. Is there anybody willing to help? So we stepped up and we asked if there was any other families. So we went out and bought gifts. We gave out some of those gift cards and brought pizza to each one of these households in the community, just all the deputies. We all spread out at once. And it was, it was a, it was a special interaction with those families. The kids were excited. The parents teared up, of course, but it was another good engagement opportunity. All right. So in two thousand and twenty-three, I promoted five supervisors. Prior to that, it was basically just me and UnderSheriff Kramer. So we've identified the areas that needed the supervision, directly from these employees, we were able to promote those through a multi-step process where they had to test and earn those positions. And we promoted those five. Our, our training improved from two thousand and twenty-three. I wasn't getting a call from the state asking where our training records were at the end of the year. So we got that covered. And then we've planned the future a lot better, which I'll mention here in a second. Gone through, updated our policies as of April of two thousand and twenty-three, and we'll do that again this year. And I mentioned our staffing levels already. So to go through some stats here, this is for our E-nine-one-one Dispatch Center, which is now under the E-nine-one-one Authority. Where on the chair of that board, there was over thirteen thousand calls that came into the Dispatch Center, which produced an average of thirty-six point six calls each day. Another thing that the Sheriff's Office is responsible for is our civil processes. And there's the numbers that we went through in two thousand and twenty-three. And then our victim advocate unit served one hundred and twenty-four clients with eighteen hundred services provided to those victims, which is ranges from everything from assisting through court, the court process, providing hotels for victims that needed, and just everything in between. All right. For our detention facility, they transported two hundred and fifty-six inmates throughout the state. The bottom graph shows the transition from Teller County to Chayke County, which is about half the travel time. Half the time dedicated towards transportation has been a huge help for just the morale, too, not for all the other reasons. And the graph above that shows the split of where those arrests came from. So the Sheriff's Office, about eighty-seven percent of those two hundred and fifty-six, they patrol one percent, and then the PD was twelve percent. All right, from the patrol division, the eight hundred and, or excuse me, a little over eight thousand calls for service was throughout the year. And that's just specifically for patrol to respond to. There's a different arrest. Now the arrest numbers are higher because not everybody is transported out. There's the option to bond out. And that's why that number's a little, a little higher. These are the fifty-five property crimes and one hundred and fifty-one persons' crimes. Those are stats that we pulled from the federal reporting that we have to do, and it's specific to their requirements. About eighteen hundred traffic stops with almost eight hundred cases taken. As I mentioned before, we kind of range in a variety of types of calls that we respond to. But there was one that stands out to me is the Rico Archuleta case where he barricaded himself in a house in the city limits with a loaded weapon. And we were able to peacefully resolve that just because of the joint effort. We even pulled in Chayke County and their SWAT team, where people led the police department, and our staff, jail, and everyone. And we were able to resolve that without any harm. Surgeon rescues conducted thirty-two missions this year, or in two thousand and twenty-three. And that's an all-volunteering force. That's good. So a couple of achievements, issued out the meritorious service, which you guys were a part of. So it was just a way to express my gratefulness for everybody during that period, for all the work, when it was just unknown what was going to happen. But people stuck it out. So I was grateful for that. The next two was through you guys again, through the county, which we greatly appreciate the recognition. And it's definitely a morale boost. So thanks for, thanks for that. Joe definitely earned it. And thank you for the, the team award also. Right, well, it's, we deal with a variety of things, like I mentioned. Some of it is, it's kind of hard to deal with. We had three fatal crashes on our state highways this year, two from one crash and one from the other. It's just, it's just the situations that we have to deal with. And, you know, it reminds us of, you know, where we should put our focused efforts into to try to save lives. And we do work with the Colorado State Patrol and their information that they gather and the techniques that they use to try to prevent those, but they still happen. I did receive a nice thank you gift from Earl. Earl owns Fat Bellies down in Texas. He comes up for the race series every year and really appreciates law enforcement. And he's quite the chef, so he took some of his Southern Special gumbo and he just ordered appreciation lunch. It was great. We had everybody out there for that. He served us the whole nine yards. So that was, that was a good experience. All right. So our future will be approaching some rebranding. And, and our goal is to, just to kind of give a new face to the Sheriff's Office. This is probably going to take multiple years before we get to that point where we're able to rebrand us from the vehicle standpoint. Really excited, as you guys all know, that we have an undersheriff that started January eighth. And he's at a sheriff's conference right now. So he's learning quickly, but we also have the space for him to learn correctly. And he has the background and the mentality of exactly what we were looking for. And it just makes me grateful that we were all able to, to wait that nearly two years to find the right person for the job and that everybody shared that additional workload to get us to the point where we had the right undersheriff in place. So it's just really going to propel our growth and take some of the strain off of everybody. So to our training calendar in two thousand and twenty-four, as I mentioned, we slowly increased our, our, our training through, from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. And this year, we built out an entire year pre-planned training. Every Wednesday is a training day for somebody. And it's been pre-scheduled out to not only make sure that we're meeting the minimum requirements, but that we're also going above and beyond that, applying it to scenario-based, just to add that stress element. So we have a good reaction from our, from our deputies. And it all comes from training.
This is the next page. Okay.
So this is the dispatch change that I brought up earlier, that is now in transition to underneath the authority or underneath the E-nine-one-one Authority. This year, we've scheduled out to be a transition year. There's a lot to work through. We've had to work with our Treasurer's Office and Finance just to see how this all needs to be laid out. And so I think we have plenty of time to make sure that's all handled correctly and that everybody is aware of how that's going, that transition will go. We have appointed Chelsea Parsons, who's been here for quite a while now. She's worked her way up through the ranks and has demonstrated the ability and desire to be in that position. So we've appointed her as the interim Executive Director for the Lake County Communications. And we'll eventually post that position and, and see what type of candidates we receive. So also going into year two, we're going to learn, learn from twenty-three, what worked, what didn't work. We're making those training improvements and also focusing on being proactive now in our recruitment efforts, since we have positions that we want to fill. And whereas before it was just simply a post of what's available. So now we're going to take it a step up and be a little more proactive. And I really want to focus on the wellness of our staff and, and the retention that that comes with. Going back to those earlier numbers where we had over eight thousand calls for service, that averaged to be about nine hundred and twenty-something calls per deputy. And just to give that some comparison, why we want to improve our recruitment efforts. Just looking at a couple of the other counties, I've noticed their call volume per deputy is around six to seven hundred per deputy. And there's some stats out there through the FBI and the Uniform Criminal Reporting System that they see about two point four officers per thousand. So it just, it just goes to show that we are making the right steps to make sure that we're fully staffed and that we're not overstaffed with the right levels, what our focus is. Thank you.
Yeah.
You guys have any questions for me?
Uh, permissionless question, just come.
No, thank you so much.
I, I wondered, and I really appreciate the mention of sort of the de-escalation, the community policing training, in addition to, you know, the necessary, you know, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it's been great to, they have training specific for that, where the deputies are put under pressure to act and to do something. And then they're judged. So that's, it's a, it's a stressful type of training to go through, but it really helps when they have to really encounter a situation where they have to focus on that de-escalation efforts. And there's been quite a few stories where I'm pretty proud of the deputy's response, where it could have gone even lethal, and they've been able to de-escalate the situation.
That and your prevention focus to getting there.
That and your prevention focus to getting there eventually. I think a lot of that comes from taking care of your people in the first place, as you also, also emphasizing, so thank you.
Well, and we'll make that public. We'll get that report out, so everybody can have access to it.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Steve.
See ya.
Thanks.
Do we want to actually, for an acknowledgement, do we actually make a motion on that? Or do we just, did I, sorry, I should know this at this point, but should we make a motion or is it okay that it's just gonna be a?
Yeah, you, there's no formal action that you should need to take.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Would it be possible to move agenda item eight to the next one, so that my book can leave? We go home, I see.
Absolutely.
No objection or review?
Yeah, I'm good with that too.
So, yeah.
If you can pull Frost Solutions website?
Yeah, website?
Yeah.
What is the website?
Frost Solution. There, I mean, weather station?
This?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is?
I'm just gonna share it, Michael.
So this is what, what we're kind of looking at. There, they will provide a lot of information to not only Roden Bridge, but the county as a whole. A lot of departments can use this. I don't know if you, did you, it's, did you see the municipality one? Back at the top?
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
So some right here?
Yep.
Okay.
So safe roads, happier residence, easy on the budget. You can just scroll up, cause it can, or it keeps scrolling down, I'm sorry. So Frost Solutions give a lot of data that we can't get ourselves. Obviously beside the camera on scene, we get air road temperature viewpoints. And we can collect that data over time, so we can look and see, you know, what maybe we can expect this time of the year or all of that. Hopefully, I can put people where I need to and not like have to call everybody in because we got snow. Like one night over the weekend, it was like Leadville got it from Lake City again. So I was able to get everybody to Leadville to help out. You can scroll down somewhere.
Okay, tell me where to stop.
Oh, that's good. All-year-round benefits, we can watch floods, flood areas, we can relocate these cameras pretty easily. So where we need them, we can relocate them. We can watch the fields, parks.
Water kitchens.
When you play prone areas. It's, yeah, and you know, we can take pictures of all that and we can record it. The biggest thing about these is it's not only us that can see them. Anybody can go to a website and see them. So for recreation, for people coming out of town who wanna know what the weather's gonna be like in a certain area of Lake County, they can see what's going on, they can see what the weather history's been over a couple of weeks or whatever. It's just a lot of information that we don't have, and being as where we're located, a lot of the weather stations or what, whatever can't predict what's gonna happen in Lake County. With having these separate all through the county, we're looking at five of these cameras, starting at the north end and going south. We'll be able to get an idea of what's going on in the county pretty quickly as weather's changing and what it's doing instantly also. It's just, it's good, I mean. Yeah, no, they're pricey, but we don't have to maintain them at all. If they break, they will be replaced for that same cost. And every upgrade that they have to do to them, either software or hardware, they will take care of that throughout the year if we need it. I think it's, it's good, you know, even if we just try it for a while and see how it works for a year. I think it's gonna be, you know, a positive thing for Lake County. And that's why I don't have this. Because if there's a, there's a thing, so we can mount them ourselves, we don't need anybody to mount them for us. They're all cell phone operated, so, and they're, they're, it's all included in the price.
Okay.
I didn't dig into this in the package, sorry, is there a data storage issue? Like, do we store the data? Do they store the data? Or like?
They store it.
Okay.
And, but it's our da- data, so we can get, get to it anytime.
Yeah.
And not only that, they can work out other counties or cities that might have it upwind from us. They can start providing us data as it's moving towards us. And then they can work that out with them to share their data with us.
Like, like weather rights?
Yeah, so like if that's getting dumped on, we might get that same storm or, you know, if it's coming from I seventy Bay Eagle that way, this way.
Okay.
We, we can share that data.
All right. Do others have this, are others using this?
Yeah, they do. Colorado has, Colorado has a bunch of these in, in the state.
Is five cameras enough for what you?
For, I think for what we're trying to do, yeah, because we can get, you know, if I ski cooper, County Road nineteen, someplace in there, to get the, you know, what's happening on the north end of the county, we can move further down towards County Road nine and Turquoise Lake. I wanna put one in, at least one in town someplace, so I know what's going on here in town. I thought about the courthouse here, but we were talking the other day, maybe the ice, ice palace park, the ice palace, the ice skating rink. Cause we're having a lot of fun down there right now. It's like at the library. And then, you know, just the next step further south, we know that around County Road eleven, halfway, we have a lot of weather problems. But, you know, maybe we can get ahead of that before it happens. And then from Lake City someplace.
Okay, and what's the, the cost per camera?
It's three thousand dollars a camera.
Okay.
Per year, yeah, and that takes, like I said, care of everything.
Just from the, I was gonna say, I reviewed the proposal, provided a couple of comments back, which they accepted and changed in the proposal and prepared one of the county's purchase order for this, since this is mostly equipment with some ancillary services. And so I'm waiting to, they sent back today the updates, but there was a typo, so I've sent it back, I haven't heard from them. So at this point, I would recommend, if you're inclined to approve it, to approve it pending final legal review for that. So maybe those documents in place.
Do we need to, do we need to add this aside? Are we adding security cameras in other places?
Oh, yeah.
Like trail counters and stuff like that?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
I didn't do that.
Cause there, yeah, there's other, yeah.
It looks like at the library, it's got cameras all over, but I don't know what we really saw.
Okay.
Okay. Um, yeah, I would be in favor of adding to kind of our inventory for other, other needs.
Yeah, and these cameras can zoom in on things too, so we can see, even if we're at a wide angle, we can zoom in on something.
Okay. Chris, does the, the purchase order specify the amount of cameras?
Yes, it, it, yeah, it has the five at three thousand dollars per unit for a total cost of fifteen thousand. And as Michael mentioned, it's a one-year purchase order, so we're not obligated beyond this one year for that.
Okay. I guess my only point of discussion is that I'm, I'm worried that you, you won't have enough of them. And that you might want more.
We can always have more next year.
I, I would just, I would.
Or mid-year, right?
I, yeah, I just will. I just, in order to like not come back to us with additions to the service, I would like to be able to give you.
I don't know that we can add to in the middle of the year, because it is, it's, we.
It's a yearly.
We buy the equipment.
Okay.
And so you don't change, and if you terminate, you'll get anything back. So if it doesn't end up working the way we hope it will, you're, so you're obligated for the year of fifteen. So if you want more, my suggestion might be to go in and ask them to add.
Yeah, we get out of right now still.
I feel, I wonder, I mean, I think we should have security cameras, but I am worried about using these as security. I mean, these do a whole lot more.
Right.
So maybe we just add to.
Security cameras?
Yeah, some other security cameras in the system we have currently. I mean, especially with vandalism, these are, if we get a number of these ruined. I mean, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the locations you might set them at where we could have dual purpose. But for your deployment and efficiencies and kind of heads up on.
And I did forget to mention, these will notify us if a temperature drops to a certain point in a certain area, so that, and we can start watching that area.
One thing I, I know is from what I said, it, it looked as if they're installed at pavement level to be able to, to.
Oh, no, they, they're, they're up high, so people can't touch them, but they.
Okay, cause that's what's gonna be my thing if you keep running over and over again.
Yeah, they, they do take temperatures on the highway, but they're infrared temperatures, so.
And for your purposes, you think that five is plenty?
I think for right now, just along, you know, the main corridor through the county. CDA takes care of ninety-one, and there's not any county roads except for ninety-one, uh, Highway ninety, ninety-one B off of ninety-one.
Sure.
Spit that out.
So it seems weird to me that a commercial company wouldn't be willing to take our money and want it up.
Yeah.
They offered just, you know, the number was up to us.
Yeah.
Oh. Sorry?
I, I'm good, starting with five, right, cause I could also see them like for OHV enforcement, but let's, I mean, let's not get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah. I guess that was just my question, I think. I mean, if you have them in those little patients that have a concentration of activity on the, in the summertime, on the east side of town or at Turquoise Lake, like what's your flexibility or would you prefer more?
Well, and again, is that more for security cameras for enforcement issues or conditions of the roads and the trails and stuff?
Yeah, there's definitely a different level of, like, game camera, kind of trail count things you can get, you know, for, with different sophistication. I do, I do appreciate your thought on, on deploying folks and, you know, actually knowing between what, the differences in what might happen between the county. I also am curious to see how that happens, you know, what are winter locations versus summer locations potentially? And the tourism visitation is an interesting one, cause you're right, you get a lot of people who think that things are just fine. Or, or maybe they are better, and you should stop here and not go to I seventy, I don't know. But yeah, I think I'd be, I'm eager to see what kind of information you bring from it, yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
I mean, they ran me through a whole, a whole bigger skill than I just didn't view, but there's so many people's, as the snow starts coming and how they were watching, you know, their cameras to get the information and.
Yeah.
Pretty good. And I'm wondering, even if we gotta spend a little money, if it saves us in the long run with diesel fuel and all of that, it's a good idea.
Yeah, as in staffing and overtime, especially.
Yeah, cause there'll be a lot of it this week.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve pending legal review, the contract with Frost Solutions for five weather cameras.
So moved.
Second?
Uh, any further discussion or?
None for me.
None for me either, thanks.
Great, and I'll call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, is approved.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Michael.
Nice rest of your week.
Enjoy your day.
I will.
So we're back to item number two. The lease agreement with Midwest Connect for postage machine?
Yes, and Hunter might be chiming in on this if she knows, but it's my understanding that the machine that the sheriff's office currently has is antiquated and is no longer supported, so this was to, this is to allow them to lease a, a new machine after way too many times going back and forth with Midwest Connect about the contract documents. They finally sent me something that actually made sense, and, and so I, I recommend that it be approved at least, to bring the, the updated equipment in.
Okay. I don't have any questions, anyone?
And just, as I say, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, this is based on state contract too. So we're participating on the state's contracts to be able to get the same fees and services and that kind of stuff.
Great. I'll move to approve the Midwest Connect contract to lease a postage machine for the clerk and recorder's office.
A second.
Okay, uh, any last minute question?
No.
Second, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the agreement with Midwest Connect is approved. Thank you. Item number three, discussion and approval of amendments to the Lake County Government Employee Handbook, Zoe. And like, I mean, these are, these are the ones that we discussed in the work session, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you want me to pull those up, ten, Zoe, Chris?
Oh, two, if you wanna.
Whatever you. Whatever you got, do you want me to?
Yes, yeah.
Screen share those? Okay.
My recollection from the work session is they were fairly straightforward, and we didn't have any major questions on them.
Right. Right. Okay. All right. Perfect, so this first amendment would be for remote work, just stating that it is within the state of Colorado and with the approval of our county manager. This one is to simplify the personal leave for three-quarter time employees. So you can see here. Okay. I'm sorry. No, that's good. Um, and then this one is just adding reasons for sick leave, and this is following the Colorado's Healthy Families and Work Place Act. Okay. And this adds loss of pregnancy to our bereavement leave. The Colorado's law regarding workers' compensation going from four to ten working days to let us know of an injury. And then this came up during the EMPG audit, and it's basically just outlining responsibilities for emergency management and having employees sign up on those responsibilities. And this is the. And this is the removal of the comp sorter because the county does not need to adhere to Colorado overtime and minimum pay standards. Okay.
Any questions or discussion?
Um, I don't think so, just wanted to remind us to make sure that we have CLT trained staff on changes.
Yeah. Good. So I'll call for a motion to approve the presented amendments to the Lake County Government Employee Handbook.
So moved. A second?
Okay, uh, we're good, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the amendments are approved. Anything else you need from us in implementing that besides the comment from?
No, I'm gonna make those, but it's, it's in the amount and then training for managers for sure. Cool.
Thank you. Thank you, Joey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you too.
Okay. Agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of Colorado Works Memorandum of Understanding and the Annual Reaffirmation of the Colorado Works Program MOU. Janine, you are up.
Janine, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Okay. All right, just getting outside. Yeah, so, uh, standard, standard MOU with Colorado Works with the state saying that we agree to operate Colorado Works program in Lake County.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, not at this time. I'll move to approve the Colorado Works Memorandum of Understanding and Annual Reaffirmation of the Colorado Works Program MOU.
A second?
Okay, uh, call for a vote, unless there are any other questions?
I don't have any other discussion, no, thank you.
All right, aye?
Aye.
Aye, the MOU and the annual reaffirmation are approved. Thank you. Number five, discussion and consideration of. Uh, number five, discussion and consideration of the Colorado Childcare Assistance Program MOU with the state of Colorado.
So very similar, uh, just running the childcare assistance program for the state in Lake County.
Okay. I will make a motion that we approve the Colorado Childcare Assistance Program MOU with the state of Colorado, also known as CCAP.
A second?
Great, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the Childcare Assistance Program MOU is approved.
Okay.
Uh, okay, uh, just make sure I'm in the right place. Number six, discussion and consideration of the early childhood MOU with the state of Colorado.
Same as the last two, um, these are our requirements with the state.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
No, none for me, thank you.
I'll call for a motion to approve, yeah.
I can make a motion that we approve the early childhood MOU with the state of Colorado.
A second?
Okay, um, there's no discussion, so I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the early childhood MOU is approved, uh, so on to agenda item number seven. A discussion and consideration of the Colorado Balance of State Continuum of Care Coordinated Entry System MOU.
Yep, same as the others, this is, um, well, similar, I should say. This is a new, um, process that we're looking at coordinating entry for homeless services and we're doing that through our wraparound program up to age twenty-four.
Okay.
Is that, so the wraparound, the adult wraparound is not included here?
Um, not at this point, um, that's a good conversation for, um, including them. They will not be the point for the coordinated entry, um, the advocates of Lake County have, have pinpointed that they are the coordination of entry point for adults over age twenty-four. Um, but it doesn't mean we aren't working with them and working with that same population. It just means that we coordinate the entry so that we're tracking it all together.
Okay.
And Janine, I think this is the one where this MOU, I think it was recommended that the VOCC be the, because there might be multiple agencies of county involved. So the VOCC would be the, the signatory versus DHS, if you will. Um, and I think I sent a note yesterday that I was still waiting, I was gonna see if it was in teams.
Yeah.
There's check boxes as to what roles and responsibilities the county is going to assume, this still needs to be completed before.
Yes, you are correct. And I, um, I just, we replied to your email this morning and then I remembered this was on the agenda, but, um, what I can do is have Gloria look at that. I believe the library and some other folks at the county were also asked to participate in this MOU, so we just need to clarify who's doing what in those roles.
Right. So this would be the blanket VOCC approval that Lake County Government is participating in this, but each individual department that does have a role in homelessness will have their own checkbox form, right? Library has certain patron privacy things they need to maintain, same with DHS or how, how folks can get the resources they need.
Okay, so we're okay to approve?
Yeah.
This MOU?
Yes, and then the department directors will fill out the checkbox areas, yeah.
All right, um, I'll move to approve the Colorado Balance of State Continuum of Care, um, Coordinated Entry System MOU.
So, a second?
Okay, great, any additional questions or discussion?
Um, maybe just what, Janine, how did the re-drawing of, does this have to do with the boundary and? Okay, okay.
Nope. That's the ray.
The ray, yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. Uh, nothing else for me, thank you.
Okay, then I'll call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the Balance of State Continuum of Care, uh, County MOU is approved. Thank you, and we did number eight, um, just quickly before we start number nine, is Anne on deck? Does she know that we're moving pretty quickly? Great, thank you. Then, uh, I did item number nine, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four dash six, the Mill Levy Resolution for fiscal year twenty-two-four. We have Tim listed, but.
Um, so as you may recall, every year, you guys certify the mills for other, taxing entities, what is this, number nine?
Yep.
And, uh, there are varying, uh, taxing districts within Lake County, um, so now that you have to certify your own, but then you certify everybody else's that they've also done their job in setting the mill levy or not setting it. Uh, we did just receive Sylvan Lakes, um, so, uh, we have them all.
That's correct.
We have them all.
Okay.
And the resolution has been updated, um, so, uh, fairly normal, uh, business, but I don't know if Stephanie or Commissioner Marcela or anybody else, some more detail they wanna fill in?
Um, I did, I'm sorry, just this morning, add in that big spreadsheet that shows like the TIF breakdown and, um, sort of what we send to the state, so that's in your packet too. I'm sorry, that was just there this morning, but it's pretty routine that you see every year, so just wanted to let you know that's in there too, if you. Any questions, love anything?
Okay.
No, uh, nothing more for me, Steph hit it pretty good.
Okay, uh, then I'll call for a motion for to approve our Resolution twenty-two-four dash six, the Mill Levy Resolution for fiscal year of twenty-two-four.
Um, so moved?
A second?
Great. Do you want to read this into our record?
It's up to you.
You can just read the, you can read the title.
Okay.
Just for you guys, but you can just read the title.
Yes.
Just the title sounds great to me. So this is Resolution twenty-two-four, or twenty-four dash six, um, of Lake County, uh, Mill Levy Resolution for the fiscal year twenty-two-four.
Nothing else for me?
Nothing for me either.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, Resolution twenty-four dash six, the Mill Levy Resolution for fiscal year twenty-two-four is approved. Great, thank you everyone on all that work. Uh, and then our final full agenda item number ten, um, the Amendment to Ordinance twenty-three dash oh-one, an ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads. And we have, and CPD staff here?
Hello, thank you.
Do you want me to pull up twenty-three dash oh-one or twenty-four dash oh-one?
Um, go ahead and do twenty-four oh-one.
Okay.
Um, so based on our work session on, uh, the eleven, um, staff and, um, consulted with legal and, um, together we, um, have amended the ordinance, um, and we prepared, we, um, included or I sent over just kind of an itemized list of all of the changes that we made, um, specific to, um, the ask of the board. I'm happy to go through all of those if you'd like or, um, just reference them if you've had time to look through them. Today, what we're hoping to do is to introduce, um, the ordinance and, uh, look for guidance on publishing it, um, and setting the public hearing. So happy to, to do whatever board desires as far as review.
Um, can I, I mean, quickly go through of just the change?
Sure.
The, the change pieces?
Yeah, I think we made a fair.
Do you want me to tell me where to scroll, Anne, and I can make sure that that shows on the screen?
Um, well, let's, actually, let's start at the whereas's, I put those at the very bottom, but if you, um, and I don't know if you need to, maybe you can follow along, let's see, the first one is uh, whereas ordinance twenty-three oh-one, and, um, so it would be down a little bit, um, right there. Um, so we just added and recognized ordinance twenty-three one oh-one in that it was adapted as a stopgap measure to address certain emergent issues while Lake County conducted further investigation and research regarding the impact of OHV use of county roadways. So we just recognize that because we're gonna resend it, so we wanted to make sure that we, um, uh, made note of it. And then, um, there's a whereas almost, I think it's not quite the last whereas, um, but it's the one just prior, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, okay, um, and so this was, uh, directed to, uh, by the board to staff, and so this, uh, addresses kind of limiting where we're at right now, so whereas the Board of County Commissioners find it is in the best interest of the community to limit the degree of commercial recreational permits until such time as Lake County can determine the sustainability of increased OHV and snowmobile commercial use. Um, and so this last statement, um, as I made note, just it recognizes it's in the best interest of the community to limit the degree of commercial use currently and then just acknowledges that future work that we've been talking about with PROs and the sticker program. And, um, I would also say, um, that we specifically wanted to make it, um, exclusive to OHV and snowmobile, um, commercial use, and so that's specific, um, or intentionally specific.
Okay.
Um, then under definitions, so that very first one, um, we added the, the following sentence at the end, um, which just says which are prohibited for general recreational use as far as snow cats or groomers.
Okay.
And, um, but the other, there was an ask to add motorized and after review, um, we are gonna air and, and certainly I, um, checked with Chris, this is a statute definition, and so um, there tends to be unintended consequences when we go in and modify statutorily defined, um, use. And so we're just, um, cautioning on the side of, or, or airing on the side of caution, um, and keeping that the same.
Yeah, that commission would you'd ask to add, um, motorized in front of self-propelled vehicle and the recommendation is not to do that, just so we stay consistent with that and then looking at the use of this statutory definition across other communities too, they don't have, and I think that allows you more flexibility and inclusion in terms of the type of units that are involved, that are evolving forward and not have to argue whether an electric, you know, OHV unit is the same as motorized or that type of thing.
Okay. Yeah, and this is specific to OHV and I think when we put more signage out, it'll be, I mean, it won't, I just, I know something that was cautioned to us in, like, putting signage up of limiting vehicle access is like, don't just say wheeled vehicles, say.
Yeah, motorized and self-propelled.
Yeah, like vehicles, because then you're limiting bikes or carriages or whatever the other, you know, non, or, or other human-powered vehicles maybe, anyway.
No.
As long as we don't think that that's gonna be misconstrued, I guess.
Section one, um.
Can I just, um, so it was brought up to us after the meeting too, that, the groomers piece?
Uh-huh.
And like general, yeah, that OHV, um, that there are some, did, did, I, I had thought to reach out to Michael, but there is some like of the tiny old cat groomers that people bring out on trails, and I think our concern is like the cats that are big and modern and meant to groom and maintain the facilities versus the smaller guys that people might bring out.
So on, on those with the smaller ones, just from conversations, tangential conversations with Michael and also watching from my window, it's like a convoy of eight of those um, that they trailer in from either Summit or Niggle County, um, and go out and use trails and stuff, um, I don't, I don't know that they have in from Adam Dushar, I don't know that they have private property that they're using or not, but
So maybe air it on the side of keeping this?
Yeah, would be my suggestion, with the intent of everything else.
Figure out how we. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think it addresses that, that the intent of your concern and that they kind of maybe you have this one-off situation, but yeah, I, I think I would kind of keep the ordinance consistent and then
Okay.
can kind of address that if we have these kind of one-off situations.
Through the permit, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you good with this there?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay, section one designation of roads, um, to Commissioner, uh, Marcela's request, we, we just emphasized, uh, we added, you know, that, that Harrison Avenue is a state highway, so it reads Lake County roads except those that are part of the state highway system to include without limitation Harrison Avenue in the city of Leadville are designated as multipurpose roads. But we really wanted to make sure that we were pulling out that Harrison Avenue is, um, uh, part of the state highway system. I know that was important to make sure that that was included. Um, so, I think Chris actually did that in, in a couple of different places. Um, section three, commercial OHV use standards. Um, and so this is to, um, you know, we put the whereas and the reason behind the limitation on the use. And so under standards, um, we added all OHV or snowmobile outfitter and guide applicants um, must have operated in Lake County within the past twelve calendar months preceding the application date. Um, so that is a standard now, yeah.
Right there. Sorry, number two.
Number two.
Okay.
And then we, um, at the very, towards the, um, well, let's see, right in about the middle, we upped the liability insurance to a million instead of a hundred thousand, and it's down a little bit, yeah, yeah, oh, right there. So number nine, that limit has been increased to a million. And then, um, number thirteen, um, so we talked about assignability, um, you know, and how would that work and what we've seen historically, so we just put the permits are not assignable without the advance written consent of the authority by commissioners, which gives you the ability to review it. Under the permit approval criteria, um, next, number two, um, we just added, um, that, uh, discussion, uh, Commissioner Fiedler had on making sure that, um, it's not an intense use of the county road, it's relative to the condition of the roadway and or existing volume of use, so we changed degree to volume of use and added in the condition. And then I know that you had cited the, um, statute that, um, uh, Michael found while we were having the discussion. And, you know, also gives the authority for road closure, so, um, that's been added, um, at the beginning of the ordinance. And there may be a few other edits, Chris, but I think those are, you gotta give the high, high lights.
I think it may, or, or just, uh, you know, for clarity or what, not to actually change the substance.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So those, those are everything that we have for you today, um, and then I just wanted to confirm that the public hearing is set for February sixth, um, at eleven o'clock. I tried to look, um, that's the only time I saw it set on your calendars for anything, um, and so I, I'm assuming, so that's the time that I used was February sixth at eleven for the public hearing, and.
That's a regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And so then, um, just need it read in, and you can do it by title, like the motion to publish if everything looks okay.
Well, and here's the, the, the catch with that, is that when you read it, it wasn't at a regular or special meeting, it was a work session.
Right, so that's why.
So I think the code, I think the code requires it to be read in, and so it's considered a first reading, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Since it wasn't at a regular or special meeting, sorry, for whoever gets to read that.
I was trying to skip over that. I will, I, I'll pass off if I need to, do you want me to go ahead and read it in and make a motion?
Yeah, but can I ask, so what actually are we voting on today? Is, is it?
This, to, to be able to approve this for publication, set the public hearing date.
Prove, so we're proving? So we're proving twenty-four oh-one for publication, yes, okay.
Correct, and setting the public. Oh, yeah, and that's just so twenty-four.
Okay, and, 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 and just on that, just, and I, I don't, maybe it doesn't affect what we vote on today, but like, we, are we, it says amend twenty-three oh-one, and then at some point where you're speaking, we said we're, at some, I mean, we will rescind twenty-three oh-one, so, okay, so
We're gonna rescind now.
it's cleared and what you're about to read in here, it's fantastic.
Yes.
And at the public hearing, um, you can make changes without having to hold another public hearing, so.
Great.
But we are, we are doing at this point, the knowledge that we have, so, okay.
Okay, then take it away.
All right, here we go. An ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads, whereas Colorado revised statute sections thirty-three, fourteen, one-ten, thirty-three, fourteen, one-. sections 3314-110, 3314-118, 33145-107, 3314.5107, 3314.5108, and 3314.5110 authorize the Lake County Board of County Commissioners to adopt this ordinance regulating the means of conveyance for off-highway vehicles, OHVs and snowmobiles in a manner not inconsistent with other federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations. And whereas Colorado revised statute 30111012 authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to adopt this ordinance regarding health, safety, and welfare issues as otherwise prescribed by law. And whereas Colorado revised statute 30111012 authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to designate roads for multipurpose use and impose a fine and penalty for violations as a class-two petty offense, as well as assess a fine under the penalty assessment procedure in section 163201 of Colorado revised statute and section 4141063BC and D Colorado revised statute, and also authorizes the Board of County Commissioners to designate highways under their jurisdiction for oversnow use only. And whereas resolution 1013 was enacted to designate all county roads as multipurpose roadways, providing recreational access to OHV, snowmobiles, and similar use, motorized recreational use, along with foot, traffic, bicycle, horseback, and similar use, non-motorized recreational use. And whereas ordinance 1202 was adopted to establish enforcement through fines and penalties as a class-two petty offense. And whereas ordinance 2301 was adopted as a staff gap measure to address certain emergent issues while Lake County conducted further investigation and research regarding the impact of OHV use of county roadways. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners is desirous to ensure recreational access is balanced in a manner between all user groups, including general or public, commercial, motorized, and non-motorized, as to not threaten safe access for all, promote the preservation of the quality of the experience, and to properly mitigate adverse impact. And whereas Lake County has created a Lake County OHV roadway use map, which will be updated from time to time to provide the public access information, increase county awareness, and provide for informed decision-making. And whereas Lake County traffic volumes and recreational use has increased since ordinance 1202, resulting in the need for a more managed approach to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And whereas ordinance 1202 did not contemplate or provide guidance on the management of commercial recreational user groups. And whereas a coordinated planning effort has been facilitated by community planning and development in collaboration with Lake County Mapping, Public Works, Parks Recreation and Open Space, and the Sheriff's Office to develop a commercial permitting process, policy oversight, and enforcement in accordance with this ordinance. And whereas community planning and development hosted public engagement through town hall meetings, stakeholder interviews, web-based public comment portals, and surveys. And whereas the inclusive data collected by community planning and development has been considered in making these determinations. And whereas the Board of County Commissioner finds it is in the best interest of the community to limit the degree of commercial recreational permits until such time as Lake County can determine the sustainability of increased OHV and snowmobile commercial use. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wants to create a balanced commercial and general or public recreational use of county roads to preserve and maintain roadways and the safety, welfare, and health of the community. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado. Definitions, off-highway vehicle OHV, it is recognized that types of motorized recreational vehicles are evolving, and as such, recreational use may not be limited to current OHV or snowmobile models. Therefore, an OHV is defined as a self-propelled vehicle which is designated to travel on wheels on four tracks in contact with the ground, which is designated primarily for use off public highways, and which is generally and commonly used to transport persons for recreational purposes. OHV for purposes of this ordinance does not include snow cats or groomers, which are prohibited for general recreational use. Snowmobile, snowmobile is defined as a self-propelled vehicle primarily designed or altered for travel on snow or ice when supported in part by skis, belts, or cleats, which is designated primarily for use off public highways and which is generally and commonly used to transport persons for recreational purposes. For purposes of this ordinance, all standards associated with OHV shall also apply to snowmobiles. General or public use, user, a self-guided individual using, user utilizing county roadways for motorized or non-motorized recreational use, where no consideration is paid to a third-party guide to access the experience. Commercial user, an individual or company offering OHV guiding or motorized OHV recreational rental services, which may include outfitting to the public and utilizing county roadways in exchange for some type of consideration, generally with a monetary value. Multipurpose access, access granted to general users, properly permitted commercial users, both motorized and non-motorized, for the purpose of recreation on county roadways, notwithstanding exceptions based on any standards outlined in this ordinance. Section one designation of roads, Lake County roads except those that are part of the state highway system to include without limitation Harrison Avenue in the city of Leadville are designated as multipurpose roads for the appropriate use of all means of conveyance, including but not limited to foot, travel, horseback, bicycle, motorcycle, all-terrain vehicle, snowmobile, car, or automobile, truck, and other motor vehicles. Section two, general OHV use, all operations of conveyance on county roads shall be conducted in a safe manner and in compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, and orders. Prohibited areas for OHV use include protected wildlife areas, alpine tundra, private property, and areas designated for pedestrians or non-motorized use only. OHV use is also subject to the following, which all, which will be enforced pursuant to applicable provisions of Lake County's adopted model traffic code. Number one, all OHVs shall be operated only by licensed operators, 16 years of age and older, unless accompanied by a licensed operator. Juveniles 18 years of age and younger must wear a helmet, and all operators must wear eye protection. Number two, all OHV operators must maintain appropriate liability insurance, registration, lighting, and operate only on designated roadways. Number three, all use of county roads by motorized OHVs must be limited to direct travel from point A, a starting point, to point B, recreation destination within Lake County. The allowed purpose of travel shall be for access to recreation destinations only and is not intended to access, is not intended to include access for shopping at retail stores, the post office, or OHV restricted areas. Number four, use of county roads by OHVs will be allowed only during daylight hours unless such vehicles are equipped with a headlight and taillight compliant with applicable state standards. Number five, OHV users are expected to be considerate of the natural environment in Lake County, particularly alpine tundra, which is fragile and valued, and shall comply with all posted notices for preservation of such areas. Exceptional care and management of these areas is provided by county stakeholders and land managers such as the Bureau of Land Management and the U.S. Forest Service. Violation of any applicable laws or regulations pertaining to such areas may be subject to penalties and or legal action. Number six, users shall comply with all notices and directives posted by the Lake County Public Works as designated by the county road supervisor and/or public works director in determining safe conditions for OHV access and use. Number seven, users shall conduct no plowing, grueling, grading, moving of snowberms, or use of any blade or earth-moving attachment without the written consent of the county, and users must carry said consent with them when performing such approved activities. Number eight, no snowmobile or OHV shall be allowed to make unreasonable noise during its operation in violation of applicable code provisions. Section three, commercial OHV use standards, use of Lake County roads designated as multipurpose roads for the legally permitted use of commercial conveyance include but not limited to foot, travel, horseback, bicycle, motorcycle, all-terrain vehicle, OHV, snowmobile, car, or automobile, truck, and other motor vehicles shall be subject to all the following. Number one, ensure guides and users adhere to the same rules and regulations for OHV use listed in section two, as well as applicable provisions of Lake County's adopted model traffic code. Number two, all OHV or snowmobile outfitter and guide applicants must have operated in Lake County within the past 12 calendar months preceding the application date. Number three, all commercial recreational use incidental to county roadways shall hold a current and valid commercial recreation permit. Number four, commercial applicants must maintain a permitted physical base of operation in either A, unincorporated Lake County through a recorded conditional use permit held in good standing, or B, the city of Leadville registered with proof of a current business license held in good standing. Number five, commercial motorized use shall not be permitted on main collector roads which serve the community as the main roadways and evacuation routes, including but not limited to Harrison Avenue and county roads four and 17. Number six, approved commercial recreation permits shall include at a minimum, A, the company name and emergency contact, B, all permitted routes, C, type of vehicle, D, group size per tour, E, days of operation, frequency per day, and season, winter or summer. Number seven, commercial recreation permits for using Lake County roadways must sign a cost and fees agreement. Number eight, commercial permit holders shall not perform county road maintenance without written approval from Lake County Public Works, and operators must carry said approval with them when performing such approved activities. Number nine, commercial operators shall furnish a general liability policy with a minimum of a million-dollar coverage per occurrence with Lake County listed as an additional insured. Number 10, commercial operators must carry a copy of any applicable permits listed above during tours and other business operations. Number 11, permits are subject to unscheduled field inspection. Number 12, permits must strictly adhere to all regulations and conditions of approval. Noncompliance may result in review and enforcement measures with the potential of revocation for noncompliance. Number 13, permits are not assignable without the advance written consent of the Board of County Commissioners. Permit approval criteria, all actions by the Board of County Commissioners in approving, approving with conditions, or disapproving commercial recreational permit, recreation permits shall be based upon the provisions of this ordinance and specifically on the following criteria. Number one, that the proposed permit shall not likely be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of county residents and other recreational users. Number two, that the proposed permit shall not result in an overly intense use of county roadway relative to the condition of the roadway and/or existing volume of use. Number three, that the proposed use will not result in traffic congestion or hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Number four, the proposed permit has provided an acceptable emergency management plan. Number five, the proposed permit demonstrates that natural and man-made hazards can and will be adequately mitigated. Enforcement, show cause hearing, revocation. Commercial permit violations may result in a show cause public hearing based on evidence that the permit is noncompliant pursuant to these regulations or any conditions of approval. The permit administrator shall first make a reasonable effort to resolve any permit noncompliance. If such effort is not successful, the permit administrator may schedule a show cause hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. The show cause hearing is a public hearing process under the jurisdiction of the Board of County Commissioners. The permit administrator shall provide the substance of the hearing by introducing the evidence which constitutes a violation of the conditions of the permit or this ordinance along with proof and effort was made to resolve the issue administratively. The permit holder or their designee may provide evidence and testimony regarding the complaint. The Board of County Commissioners shall allow for comment relevant to the substance of the hearing from the public. If after the public hearing, the Board of County Commissioners determine there has been a violation of the conditions of approval or this ordinance, then the permit may be suspended for such period as determined by the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners may also revoke the license if it finds the violation has not been cured despite advanced written notice by the permit administrator of the need to do so, or if the violation threatens the safety, health, and welfare of the community. Upon revocation, the commercial permit holder may not reply, reapply for a permit in the same occupation for a period of two years from the date of the revocation of the permit. Section four applicability, the ordinance shall apply to all county roads of Lake County, Colorado. Section five, effects of ordinance, any person cited for violation of this ordinance in the unincorporated areas of Lake County may be prosecuted before the Lake County Court pursuant to the provisions set forth in section five and six of this ordinance. The adoption of this ordinance shall act to rescind Lake County ordinance 1202, ordinance 2301, and Lake County resolution 1013. Section six penalties, general OHV use, violations pertaining to general OHV use shall be subject to applicable provision of Lake County's adopted model traffic code. Commercial OHV use, for a first offense, there will be a minimum fine of $200 imposed on any person or persons who violates any provision of section three of this ordinance. For a second offense, there will be a minimum fine of $750 imposed on any person or persons who violates any provision of section three of this ordinance. A third offense will result in permanent revocation of all permitting listed in section three imposed on any person or person who violates any provision of section three of this ordinance. Such fines shall be assessed on the commercial operator and based on the total number of recreational users involved, to include both guides and customers. Citations, law enforcement officers may issue citations to any person or persons or representatives of commercial operators suspected of having violated this ordinance. In instances where a violation has been witnessed and reported, a law enforcement officer is authorized to issue a citation to the violator. Citation shall include the following information. Number one, the offense for which the person or representative of a commercial operator is being cited per this ordinance. Number two, the specific location of the violation. Number three, the date and time of the suspended, suspected offense, if witnessed, or the date discovered by the law enforcement officer. The date, time, and location where the cited person or representative of the commercial operator is to appear before the Lake County Court, and the name and legible signature of the officer issuing the citation. Section seven, liability, the adoption of this, of the ordinance codified in this document shall not create any duty to any person, firm, corporation, or any other entity with regard to enforcement or non-enforcement of this ordinance. No person, firm, corporation, or other entity shall have any remedy against the Lake County Board of County Commissioners or Lake County Sheriff, their officers, or agents for any damages arising out of or in any way connected with the adoption, enforcement, or non-enforcement of this ordinance. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to create any liability or to waive any of the immunities, defense, limitations on liability, or other provisions of the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, section 2410101, Colorado revised statute, or to waive any immunities of defense or limitations on a liability otherwise available to each entity, agency, government body, its officers, employees, and agents. Section eight, safety, the Lake County Board of County Commissioners has determined that adoption of this ordinance is in the best interest, safety, and welfare of the citizens of and visitors to Lake County. Section nine, severability, if any section, subsection, sentence clause, or phrase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portion of this ordinance. The Lake County Board of County Commissioners hereby declares that it would have passed this ordinance irrespective of the fact that any one or more section, subsection, sentences, clauses, and phrases be declared unconstitutional. Section 10, recording that the Lake County Court is hereby ordered that this ordinance is to be introduced, read, and published in full. It was read on the 11th, first, on the 11th day of January, and the ordinance was published in full in the Herald Democrata General Circulation Newspaper published in Lake County on January 18, and the public hearing is ordered for January 6.
February 6.
I mean, February 6.
And it's read today.
And it's read today, yes.
Not January 11.
Right.
Okay. So, correct. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. So I think if I have it right, the motion for the rest of the day is to approve the public posting of that public hearing for ordinance 24-01.
I'll move to approve the posting of the drafted ordinance 2401 and set and publish the public hearing date for February 11 at 11 o'clock.
February 6.
February 6 at 11 o'clock. That's my motion. That covered.
That covers.
Or second, second, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Any discussion, comments, questions before we vote?
No, none for me. I think that covers all of it.
Uh, I have a tiny grammar thing for or from, but that can, I don't know if that's narrow or later.
We can modify that in the last, you know, in the bylaws.
Especially if it's just a typo.
I think, I think it, I just, yeah, just sort of provision, okay. Yeah, nothing else from me.
Okay, then call for a vote on the motion on the table?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion is approved.
Nice work, Ann.
Thank you.
Great.
One more thing off the list. Oh my gosh.
Okay, then I think we just have the consent agenda, which just has the January Uh, okay, then I think we just have the consent agenda, which just has the January 12th payroll on.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay.
No further discussion.
Further discussion?
None for me either.
Great, and then we can go for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. And with that, at 12:35, we can adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.